Hello ladies and gentlemen, welcome to the H-Town Show with Farhan Siddiqui. Importance of women in the society is beyond any suspicion. In today's world, women with their ambition, intelligence and strength have proven that the word inferior has nothing in common with their gender. Today I have an honor to have my guest as Nabila Mansoor. She is basically running for Sugarland City Council District Number Two. Welcome to the show Ms. Nabila.
Thank you for having me.
So, tell us something about you, your experience, what made you come into the politics?
First of all, thank you. You invited me here. I'm very happy to be here. I always thought we should put good people in politics. If good people come, good things will happen. And then, obviously, if bad people come, bad things will happen. I spent a lot of time in politics. I helped out in another campaign. I was the executive director of a group called M-Gage, which was the whole purpose of involving South Asians in politics. We were behind a lot in terms of getting involved in the political mainstream. And then, last election was 2018, midterms were very big. And many good people won the election. And then, I came up with this idea. I've spent so much time, I want to get them into office. I should also run for office. I was asked to run and I thought about it. Or then, one thing led to another and here I am.
Okay. So, why Democratic Party? Because most of the people in a community has been asking that why Nabila is running for a Democratic Party?
Yeah. So, first of all, the Sugarland City election is actually non-partisan. We don't work for Democrat or Republican. We don't put the D and the R beside us. But if you look up, it's very obvious. My roots are in Democratic Party and I'll tell you why. Democratic Party is much more inclusive and it's much more friendlier or it's much more beneficial for communities of color like ours. You know, the climate here is very toxic. And we want to make sure our children, my families feel safe. And we find that our home is in the Democratic Party. But again, I'm voting for a Democrat or Republican. It's really the best candidate for this position.
Okay. So, Fort Bend County, your school system, your objective, we're concerned about children's security, neighborhood security, gun violence. Or drugs in schools. How do you see that?
This is important. But we move to suburbs, I think, is a big reason is to protect our children. So we have private school education by sending them to public schools. So, our priority is that our children go to good schools so they can get a good education. And they climb the American ladder and they fulfill that American dream. So, when you run for office, you take that into your electoral politics and you take that into office. But Insha Allah, Insha Allah, when I win, I will certainly keep that into account. The way I look at it is that my priority is that our families are safe and our children are safe. Or it's because we don't want car burglaries, we don't want home invasions. And that happens in our neighborhoods.
Right.
The way you combat that is you make sure that your relationship with Sugarland Police Department is good. You make sure that your relationship with your school board is really good. We don't have a direct influence on the schools. Most of the school board elections are there. The school board makes decisions. But when you are in city council, you do have some influence. And the way you have influence is that the land where schools are built, where things are developed, they are owned usually more often than not by the city of Sugarland. So, if you want to build a nearby school, then they're going to have to negotiate with the city. There's always political capital when you're in office in terms of how you can expend it. And I can swear that just as I spend my political capital, it's going to be for the betterment of our children to make sure that those schools are good schools and those schools are safe. So, one way I'm going to do that is make sure that our police have enough training. We want to make sure that our police forces have enough funding. Because if there is an incident, we need police, we're in crisis mode, our police needs to know how to handle that. And they need to know how to handle that quickly and efficiently. And the way you do that is you make sure they're well-trained.
That's very good, actually. A question that people ask in the community, and I'm also a resident. A common perception is that once you win this race, how should a person access you?
Yeah.
Because the perception is that we gave them a vote, and then, if we want to reach them, it might be very difficult for us to get him or her in touch.
Yeah. So, I think, I'll give you an example. The seat I'm running for is actually an open seat. Let's say, the woman who was before was limited. You can only run for three terms. After that, you can't run for the same seat. Nobody knows her name in my district. I've asked her many times. There was a lack of leadership and I'll tell you why. She never had to run against another candidate. She would run without a lot of votes. Because she was running unopposed. And she never really came to the community. Our community is very diverse, Sugarland. But no one came to our community. Never met them. No approachability. So, I'm going to say this is called lack of leadership. Or true leadership is when you are with your community and your community feels that they have access to you and they don't... They didn't call you the first time, when your mosque was broken. You already know your relationship. And they called you, "Hello, this happened with us. Can you come?" That shouldn't be your first call. That should be the evolution of a relationship. So, I have spent a lifetime in service to others through my nonprofit work, my advocacy work, my volunteer work. But I can't govern this way. That's not my style. That's not my background. I would certainly hope that people are accessible to me. And that's what I'm doing right now. I'm meeting folks on the ground and I promise to keep meeting them.
So, you're saying that once you win, once you basically hold the chair, then you will keep meeting with the people, nailing with the people. You will be hearing their voices. If they are basically coming across any kind of issues or problems, so like you will help them. So, I think this is a very good approach which you are basically bringing on table for the resident of Sugarland. How many children do you have?
I have three children. Two are girls, Mashallah, they're in high school. So, they go to Clements High School, Fort Bend Public Schools. And then, my youngest son, who goes to elementary school.
Okay. So, how do you balance this life, one side of politics, then family life, then in-laws, especially in a culture like where we all belong to?
Yes.
Where a woman basically has to realize their responsibilities way more than any other community or the culture. How do you balance all those things?
So, I think it's more important for her than anyone else to get involved. Because, yes, this is true, we have a lot of responsibilities. But another thing is that I wear a hijab. I wear my religion every day. I come from a community which has a lot of stereotypes. So, if we go forward, we will be a success for everyone, a shattering of stereotypes. The second thing is that, yes, I have three kids, I have a husband, I have in-laws. Dinner has to be put on the table every day. All these things, if I decide that I'm in Sugarland City Council, everything stops. But I think being a mom, or even mothers understand. If there's one good thing that moms are good at, it's multitasking. We are used to that from the beginning. We know how to balance these things. So, I feel like I have a head start on anyone else in terms of juggling a lot of different things in the air. I have a head start against my opponents in the race. I have a head start against other city council members. Because I have to do this, 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 this today. But I also have to make sure that my children's homework is done and they have dinner on the table at 6:00, 6:30. So, you outsource, you look for help, but you make it work. And Alhamdulillah, I have a very supportive husband, I have very supportive kids. And this stuff is important. Our life has changed a little in our house. People are coming in, people are leaving, meetings are happening. But it's important that their kids see their mom doing something in service to the community at large. Not just the South Asian community, not just the Muslim community, but for everyone. And this is good for the family. I also care about my husband. This is good for us. It's a growing experience for us. And I hope that more women do it. Look, I look at Congresswoman Ilhan Umar, I look at Congresswoman Rashida Tlaab. I'm proud of them. I remember when they were being inaugurated. My eyes were filled with tears. And you know, they're role models for our kids. And Insha Allah, I hope to be a role model for other children.
Ladies and gentlemen, we have Nabila Mansoor for Sugarland City Council District Two. We have more things coming up. Keep watching the H-Town Show with Farhan Siddiqui. Welcome back, ladies and gentlemen. You're watching the H-Town Show with Farhan Siddiqui. We have our special guest Nabila Mansoor for Sugarland City Council District Number Two. She is a politician, she is a mom, she's a wife, she's a daughter. She is a very strong example for all of us, especially for our community women to come participate in the politics and make a community a better place to live. So Nabila, we want to know about your educational background, your working experience. Do you want to share something with the community?
Sure. So, I'm actually an attorney. I practiced law for a number of years. But after that, my children were little. I took a different role and that was really more of the advocacy role. When you're a child, you learn a lot. How is our community, how do we join our children? So, I was always interested in politics. But my new role was M-Gage, an organization that works to make sure that South Asians, Muslims, Arabs are involved in the political mainstream. I was the executive director. Or that opened up a lot of doors. All of a sudden, I was doing advocacy work. All of a sudden, I went to Austin to testify against various bills, various issues. I was meeting people within the community. I got more involved in the party politics. These things opened up an entire door to me. And we have a program. It's called Emerging Leaders. Emerging leaders, we have universities, like University of Houston, University of Texas. We had people from Texas Tech, all over Texas. But we recruited young people and we invited them to come and just learn about civic engagement. Why should I get involved? What are the benefits? How do I get involved? I was awakened when I was a teenager. But we want young people to awaken when they're in their 30s and their 40s. They need to know how it is, what are the tools they need. If you're mayor, then you should know what to do when you're 15 and 16. If you're governor, congressman. This is the next step of how you get integrated into society. And we want to give young people the access, we want to show them that door. I didn't grow up thinking that I could be a city council member or mayor or anything like that. Though, it was really exciting. We started the program basically with no help. It was something I created and every year we got better and our classes got bigger. And Mashallah, I'm very happy to say, a lot of the graduates from that Emerging Leaders program are now on my campaign, either as volunteers or they're titled like folks that are actually helping us run our campaign. So, I believe in young people. I think they're our future. And what we need to do is really invest in them. One of the reasons that we have a lot of young people in our campaign, and I'll be very honest with you, we were intentional in getting in people on our campaign. Because we want to make sure that our young people are armed with the tools that they need. So that, even in Sugarland City Council races, we're working. Even November, we have a city council race in Houston. Even in 2020, many elections are coming. We want to be able to have them, insert them into different campaigns so that other good candidates can get elected and our young people have the experience, they can get into that pipeline of leadership. So that, even if they're helping in the campaign, in two years, they're going to run for something. That's how you build power. So, we're really excited. I think young people come without a lot of baggage, as some of us older people have. They come with a sense of hope, a sense of optimism and a sense of work ethic. And so, we're really proud of that fact that we have a lot of young people on our campaign.
That's very good to know. Your expectations or expectations of your community? Are they part of your campaign, meetings and greets?
Yes.
Are they participating with full heart or I mean, they are just reluctant to participate? I mean, what are your expectations from the community people?
Yeah. I can't win without the support of my community.
So true.
And Alhamdulillah, you know, what we found is that especially I'm block walking. It's really just knocking on doors and meeting people.
But I think you're block walking.
Yes, yes, yes. It's one of the, I think, greatest tools in winning races. We can do interviews. These are all really helpful and they're important. Our social media, we spend a lot of time to make sure that people know what we're doing. But people vote based on relationships. And then, you have connection with a person, a voter. That's when they vote. You can vote for the mayor. They might come out, they might not. But when we talk, you make that ask. I will go and literally knock on the door and say, I'll have a five-minute conversation and then I'll say, "Can I have your vote, sir? Can I have your vote, madam?" That goes 10 times better in terms of connection than something that is just digital or just by mail, right? So, that's how you win these elections, we believe. And that's why I spend a lot of my time meeting my community. And I'll be honest with you, you don't run in a race like this unless you like meeting people. I enjoy it. I enjoy meeting people. I'm going to meet a lot of different folks from across this spectrum. And when I knock on doors, that's really the best way for me to meet people. That's the best, because those are the folks that live in my district. And my mind is not working. It's just Sugarland City Council. But if we want to meet people, you find out that they don't even know that there is a race. And so many times, I can't tell you that I've met someone and they're like, "You're the only person who has come and asked me for my vote. I'll vote for you." They didn't ask me what my position is, what I'm doing, what my background is, what my endorsements are. They just are so happy that someone came and talked to them and asked them for their vote. So, I believe in this and I enjoy meeting my residents. I mean, these are the people I'm going to be serving. So, I have to start building that relationship. So, yeah, that's what block walking is.
A question that many people have asked me about. Are you a good cook?
So, I'm a cook and I think my kids like it. My philosophy is that you give them and then they think that their mom is the best cook in the world. But I'm not so confident in my cooking ability. But I think Insha Allah, the work goes on and the kids are fed and we are good to go. But I'll tell you this, my kids think that I'm the best cook in the world. And that's the only opinion that matters to me.
What Salman thinks about you?
Salman is very easy to please in that sense. He doesn't like Desi cooking. So, I always blame my lack of skill on him. Because he was a Desi kind of person, he would always want something American. And I would perfectate it, like Piyani, like the way other people do and stuff. Because I don't have motivation, so it's all his fault.
So, since you are on your campaigns and you know, your meet and greets, your block walks, all those things. So, how... How do you support Salman when you're not at home? So, he's taking care of the kids, if they have to pick up the kids from the school or you know, if it's lunchtime, dinner time, how does he manage all those things if you're not home?
Right. Though, you know, Mashallah, he's very helpful. So, that just helps. And my kids are a little bit older too. So, if they're little, they shouldn't even run. Because when they're very young, they do require a lot of attention. It's all about the kids. But you know, there's just some evenings when mommy's not home and that means that daddy's taking my son to basketball practice. So, I'll come to the games. But if you practice, I usually don't come. I'll just come to the important games. With my young girls, they're in high school, they're a little bit older. They're kind of on their own. You know, in the evenings, what I do do is, whenever we're at home, I do have time with the kids. Either we watch TV shows or play board games. There's always certain time that it has to be family time. And in that sense, it's really helpful to have a spouse who is there for you. So, he does have to pick up some of the slack. This is true. But I think this is an important journey. And it means that we all have to make sacrifices. And you know, Insha Allah, when I win, I think it'll be really worth it.
Sure. Are you a typical kind of a bahu or a daughter-in-law? Like we're all like, you know, things are happening or you know, just Mashallah.
So, you know, I was born and raised here. So, I was born in Toronto and then moved here. And so, a lot of that stuff that happens is really not something that I try to play, that game. So, we try to keep that, you know, look, as a daughter-in-law or even as a son-in-law, we all have relationships we want to keep going, right? So, you have to certainly keep everyone happy. But Alhamdulillah, everyone's been really supportive. And so, we just try to make sure that everyone is taken care of and get the attention that they need and then keep going.
What's your family destination place, where you want to go quite often?
So, I'm from Toronto. Every summer, we go for like three weeks to Toronto. I really want my kids to think of Canada as their second home. Because my family is there. And our Houston summers are very brutal. Or our Toronto summers are very good, but their winters are very brutal. So, we make sure we don't go in winter. We make sure that our summer, we spend a big chunk of it in Toronto. So, my kids get a chance to see my side of the family and make those connections. And then, I get a little bit frustrated when I'm in mommy's home.
So true. Do you want to tell our audience, like if somebody wants to know more about you, where exactly they should go and find Nabila? Is there any website or any social media page you want to share with our audience, please?
Yes. So, if you want to find out more about my race or more about me, please visit Nabila for Sugarland, N-A-B-I-L-A for Sugarland. Or on Facebook, Twitter, Instagram, type in Nabila Sugarland, N-A-B-I-L-A Sugarland, all one word. You will be featured. And we've been chronicling my journey quite often on social media. So, that really is the best way to follow my race is on Facebook. Because we want to make sure that everybody knows what's going on in our race, what events are happening, how they can help us, how they can join us. And then, of course, election day is May 4th, early voting is April 22nd to 30th. And it's Sugarland, but it's a district too. It really is four neighborhoods. This is your town fair, New Territory, River Park or First Colony. So, if you live in those neighborhoods, you can certainly vote for me and you can come to my website and find out more information.
So Nabila, do you want to share like any specific zip codes which basically you are covering?
Yeah. Unfortunately, it's not, it doesn't lie completely well with the zip codes. There's parts of those zip codes that are kind of outside my area. But the two zip codes that are in are 77479 and 77478. So, those are the zip codes, but that doesn't necessarily mean you can vote for me.
So, if any of the resident wants to know like which specific areas, I mean Nabila is contesting for, so can they get this kind of information from her website?
Yes, from our website, we do have a link to something on the city of Sugarland website, which where you can type in your address and it tells you what district you live in. So, that link to that website is on our website. So, nabilafor Sugarland.com, they can certainly find out.
Okay. How do you see our community women to participate as a politician or you know, going towards the congress or mayor or something? How do you want to educate them?
Yeah. We are at a special moment right now, I believe. Mashallah, our parents are hardworking. We kind of built that role for us that has allowed us to prosper as a community, Mashallah. We have nice homes, we have nice cars and our kids are going to good schools. And all of that is important. But if you really want to make a difference, you have to be part of the civic structure of your community. And that means that, if you're on this table, you have to have a seat at the table. Where you're making decisions for the well-being of the city, for the community, of the congressional district, of the country, of the state, whatever. It's very important that we have diverse voices on the table that bring a perspective that brings one for everyone. And when you sit at the table, you have to be silent. So, I'm here in the city council, but I'm not talking. I'm not talking. No, you have to get a seat at the table and you have to have a voice at the table. So, our chance now is to get that seat at the table and to get that voice at the table. To do that, we need the support of the community. We need their support in votes, we need their support in terms of funding, we need their support in terms of publicity. This has to be a community-wide effort. Or we don't give a vote for anyone who's running from a diverse background. They cannot make it to the finish line without the support. Or this is for us, this is for everyone. Because if you have a whole voice, that's an entire group of people that no longer are having their voice heard. Though, we need to find qualified candidates. We need to find candidates that will speak truth to power, speak about what's important. And as a community, we need to put our support behind them. Whether it be for a city council race, a congressional race, Insha Allah, one day maybe a presidential race.
So, are there any specific qualifications in order to run for a city council?
So, you know, for, to be honest with you, if you want to run, you should run. That's what I say. If you have a calling, it really is a calling. It's a lot of hard work. You've got to meet a lot of people, you've got to shake a lot of hands. You have to raise money. It's a lot of work. In terms of official qualifications, other than living in the district that you reside in or just opposition to run for, there really isn't any qualifications. But that doesn't mean there aren't any qualifications. There has to be some grounding in the political work that you're about to do. So, you know, as a city council member, you work on legislation that will affect the city members. Though, being an attorney certainly helps, right? If you are working in a, you know, running for railroad commissioner, you should probably have some transportation experience. So, those are all things that are very necessary for you in order for you to be able to run. Because it becomes very transparent when there is a candidate that is out of their depth. And people are going to ask you really hard questions and you have to be able to prepare them. Because you have to prove to your voters that you're the best qualified for that position.
Right. So, since you are already working for your campaign, so are you basically expecting any donations from a community or something? So, what, you know, overall, how do you see all this experience so far?
Yeah, it's been a journey. You know, unfortunately, for running a campaign, you have to give a lot of money. It's the worst part of running a campaign, by the way. If you're a community member, you have to ask. I've worked in charities. But I always ask for an organization. It's very different trying to make yourself ask money for your own self. It's something I really struggle with, to be honest with you. But the truth is that you have to give money for yard signs. You need money for your push cards, your door hangers. All these things, you have to give money. Though, the reality is that you have to do that and it's again, part of that journey of, you know, I'm doing things that I never thought I would be doing. And I'm kind of proud of myself because I'm putting myself out there in a way that I never put myself out there before. So, we could use whatever funding we could get. If you have a website, nabilafor Sugarland.com, you can click the donate button. Even a small donation, it goes, it helps us bring that vision to fruition. And we appreciate all the support that we're getting. Our community has been really supportive. And I think, you know, we're learning, it's a part of maturing, you know? When my parents came to this part of the world, it was about survival. How do we get food on the table and make sure our kids are okay and we have a roof over our head? We're at that next level where Alhamdulillah, that is taken care of. But we want to have a greater say in our environment, we have a lot to offer. I see the young people in our city, and I get really excited about the future. I know there's a lot of talent out there, and I think great things are going to happen in the future, but they don't come without risk. And one of the risks is putting yourself out there and running for office.
So ladies and gentlemen, go at the website www.nabilafor sugarland.com and donate generously because she is basically running for you, for me, for everybody to basically raise the voice based on her experience. Try to basically utilize her experience and support Nabila. And we should have a representative from our community who can listen to us directly and willing to help us. Nabila, you heard something happened in New Zealand.
Yeah.
Which has really trembled all of us. We are, we all are basically in a deep sorrow and there's, you know... I don't have words to explain or describe my personal feelings. How do you see and... What do you want to say something about it?
Yeah, I mean, that is... Yeah, I heard the news last night, and I think a lot of us, especially your parents, had a hard time sleeping thinking about that incident. And then waking up and talking to our children about what happened. It's unfortunately one of the realities of the world we live in. But it also means that we have to just be more united than ever. Not just Muslims, but all of us, all good people in the face of hate. In Sugar Land, what I did when I heard about this news was started reaching out to our elected officials. Alhamdulillah, because of the relationships I've built, I have a lot of friends that are in the district attorney's office. Brian Middleton, our county commissioner, Ken Demerchant. KP George, our county judge. These are our local elected officials, our city of Sugar Land. So I've done a lot of work in their campaigns, I've done a lot of work previously, just helping build those relationships so we have the bridges. So Mashallah, Alhamdulillah. Today's prayer, the prayer was very loud. You know, everyone wanted to come to the mosque. And we don't want to not go to the mosque because of something that happened. I think one of the most important things is to show that we are not going to stop going to the mosque. So a lot of people came, and I'm very happy to say, these elected officials, they all came. Judges, Judge Julie Mathew, Tony Wallace, Tina Watson, they were all judges. I invited them, and they came to our mosque. And they said, basically, after the prayer, if we came before, we came to ask for your votes. Today, we came here to express our sorrow, grief. Or we're going to be here for you, and we are going to do whatever we need to, to make sure that our Muslim community is safe. And I know county commissioner, I know our DA office, they asked for extra security for the next couple of weeks to monitor that mosque. Now, again, those relationships come from building those bridges.
Right.
So we need someone in office who has those relationships. And B, it was really wonderful for them to come to the mosque and sit and talk with the folks that go to the mosque and let them know that we are here for you, we see you, we feel your sorrow, we feel your grief. And previously, our Sugar Land City Council members, they didn't go to the mosque. So isn't it time to get someone who actually cares about the community and comes out and sees them and cares about them and makes sure that they're taken care of and are feeling safe? So that's what happens when you get good people elected to office. I always say, we need to get good people elected to office because things change, your vote matters. And that's what I'm asking our community today.
So ladies and gentlemen, whether you are Indian or you're Pakistani or Bangladeshi or Depoli, please unite, support Nabila, Nabila Mansour in her campaign, make her succeed. So all of our voice should be heard and our issues, problems can be resolved. In the end, Nabila, what do you want to basically give a message to the community?
Yeah. So one of the wonderful things about running for this race is, I never wanted to run as a Muslim candidate. I wanted to run as a candidate for everyone, and that's why my slogan has always been putting Sugar Land residents first. And I think what we've seen is that, in my race, and this has been very heartwarming to me, is that when I've done outreach, that's what we've seen. I've had the support of Sri Kulkarnage, and I won the congressional race in Githi this past November. And the Hindu community has really come out in full support of my race. We have folks from the African-American community, the Latino community, the Anglo community. Sugar Land is a culture, is a city that is made up of wonderful people. And we need to continue that tradition, we need to continue that beautiful reality of what is on the ground. And so I just hope to bring that to Sugar Land City Council and represent everybody.
So Nabila, do you want to basically tell our viewers one more time what is the website they should go, the date they need to go out and vote?
Yes. So it's, May 4th is Election Day, early voting is April 22nd to 30th. We have, we are a certain district, we're District 2 in Sugar Land, which basically encompasses four neighborhoods. You have Telfair, New Territory, River Park, or First Colony. And I'll be very happy to share with you that for the first time in the history of Houston, our mosque, Maria Mosque, will be a voting day center on Election Day. So we are excited about this race, we believe we're the front runners, we believe we're going to win. And Insha Allah, we'll be back hopefully as your Sugar Land City Council member.
Thank you very much for watching The H-Town Show with Farhan Siddiqui. We had an honor of speaking with Ms. Nabila Mansour for Sugar Land City Council District Number 2. Thank you very much, ma'am.
Thank you.